Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 4, 2010? Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any citizens wish to address the council? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, please. If not, I do have two written communiques. First one is from Thermopack, addressed to Dear Chief Minowitz. Recent event has spurred us to enlighten you to a situation that occurred in Wooddale. Our business has been located in Wooddale for over twenty years, and until last week, we only had minimal interface with the Wooddale Police Department, false burglary alarms, et cetera. February 2, 2010, we were starting a new job line, knowing we had plenty of material, aluminum foil rolls, as shown in our computer inventory. When we physically checked, but none were found, several of us checked and rechecked. At this point, we knew we had a problem, but could not fathom what happened to one, what happened, or that one of our employees could be involved. We then contacted the Wooddale Police Department, and we were connected with Detective Mike Peters. He suggested that we contact the local recyclers. Jeff Simpson, our Director of Operations, went to the closest recycler, G and M, just one block away, only to find some of our material sitting right there on their shelf. Jeff called Detective Peters to see what had to be done next. Detective Peters said he would contact G and M. After Detective Peters confirmed with the owner that the material was in fact there, he also found out that an employee of Thermopack had been coming there every other day for a couple of years, and would probably be there next morning. He contacted Jeff and said they would pursue the situation. It is now Wednesday, February 3, mid-morning, when Detective Freeze and Detective Peters contacted us, explaining they caught a Thermopack employee with our coils going into G and M to sell them, and he was now in custody. What I would like to convey to you is that when, when we did not know what to do, the Wooddale Police Department answered. We personally want to recognize and thank Detective Mike Peters and Detective Freeze, who were not only professional in attitude, mannerism, and dress, but also, when given our problem, devised a plan, executed the plan, and completed the job in just two days. I realize that we must have used other officers to complete their job, and they should be thanked also. The community should take pride in the fine officers hired by the city. We sure are. Please pass our thanks to the detectives and officers of the Wooddale Police Department. And I have another thank you letter. This one happens to be from Westview School, which I don't know if they can take a copy of the photographs. The letter reads, Dear Mayor Johnson, thank you for coming to our class to read on Read Across America Day. We appreciate you taking a picture with us, too. They did one of those pictures with me with everybody. Anyway, we won't talk about that. I hope you had a good time when you came to our class. We enjoyed learning what you do as the mayor of Wooddale. We hope you can come back and read to us again. Thank you again for reading to us. Sincerely, Mrs. Knopp's third grade class. It was a pleasure. And that brings us to Mayor's Report. May I have a motion approving a resolution supporting the complete construction of Transportation Build Alternate 203D? This would be the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? By wait, let me just give you a little background. This is the $3.6 billion project, which would be the ring road around the western side of the airport, and completion of the eastern leg of the Elgin-O'Hare. And the resolution requests that the tollway, that I.D.O., complete the design engineering using the existing federal grant of $140 million, and that thereafter, when they complete the Tier One, Tier Two process, that the toll road would take it over and would do the construction of the project. Alderman, Wesley?
Mayor, with that being said, the question I have is, are the surrounding towns like Atasca and Roswell doing almost the same thing?
All the surrounding communities are adopting an identical resolution, and we've already presented about ten of these resolutions to the Secretary of Transportation and the Governor's Office, that all of us on the western side of the airport unanimously support this plan.
Okay, I have no problem. Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Cadala?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman U. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Also, under Mayor's Report, we have the, that passes as resolution R-10-06. Also, under Mayor's Report, we have volunteer recognition dinner, which, let me give a little background on this. The city of Wooddale, unfortunately, is not the same town that it was four, three, or two years ago. Just kind of review some of the things that are happening. Our largest employer, HSBC, which used to have 1,100 to 1,300 employees, has announced that they are closing down. The biggest building we have in Wooddale, the Osko Warehouse, 400,000 square foot facility, it employed 150 employees, is shutting down. In the same area, just this Monday, Insignia Security, a small little firm of 25 employees, shut down without notice to any of their employees, just told them to clean out their desks. That's on the business side. On the residential side, those of you who know One Wooddale Place, the apartments across from my office, used to have 77 apartments, used to have 150 people. I think they're down to 23 units now, and 50 people. That's 100 people that are gone out of our community. We know we have 250 to 400 foreclosures. At 4.3 people per house, that's about 1,000 people gone from our community. I state that because, in addition to that, we have some new problems that have been caused by the state of Illinois. As you know, Governor Quinn has proposed that the share that goes to municipalities of the income tax, which is about $1.25 million, be reduced by 30 percent. Our share of that reduction would be about $350,000. And the big problem that's been hitting us is the loss of the distributive fund, which that money flows through. Mr. Manager, myself, Alderman Roy Wesley, Alderman Eugene Wesley, and Alderman Dan Shockey just spent the last two days in Springfield to try to get some information as what is going on. I had a meeting with the Chief Staff of the Controller's Office. Traditionally, this money, and for the last 20 years that I've been involved in government, they collect it in, on a monthly basis, and they pay it out on six weeks after the collection. We just received our October collection, just in the last couple of days. And that was about $72,500. The problem with the state is they have $4.5 billion to $6 billion in bills that they cannot pay right now. They have a $2.2 billion loan. They have to make a $500 million payment on Tuesday. They do have the money to make the $500 million payment. They do not have the money at present to make a $750 million, $750 million payment, which is due in April. So they are telling us that we will get the November distribution in the next two weeks, but the December distribution out of the distributive fund, they don't know when that will be issued at all. He could not give us any, any prognosis on that. Some of the state legislative leaders told us it will be eight months, 10 months, maybe 12 months before we get back to regular payments on the distribution funds, which is about $80,000 per month. The priorities, let's see, they owe $1 billion currently to the school districts, they owe $1 billion currently to the colleges, and their priorities are payment, is they go to debt service of the state of Illinois first, so that they do not default on their loan payments. Second priority is schools. Third priority is the state payroll. The fourth priority is stimulus money, matching funds such as the feds. And the fifth priority, the money then would go to the cities. That's where the state stands at present, and we're estimating the possible shortfall for the upcoming year may be in the realm of about $750,000, between the governor's cuts and the delayed payments. So with that in mind, it doesn't seem appropriate that although, all those people that serve the city of Wooddale are certainly due recognition, and we certainly will send them a letter of thanks for their service, but it does not seem appropriate at this time that we, at taxpayers' expense, have a recognition dinner. So if, unless there is an objection from anybody, since it's like the wedding says, speak now or forever hold your peace, that'll be deleted from this year. Okay, hearing none. That concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
Well, following up on the Mayor's Report on the budget and our trip down to Springfield, and following up on the budget session that we had last week, I met with most of the department heads today to look at the existing budget and see if we could scrub any savings from that. I'm meeting with the police department tomorrow on the same agenda item, and we are prepared to present to you next week some potential additional cuts to the budget that might plug some of that potential shortfall. I hope I can get that out to you tomorrow afternoon. I don't think that's, that's doable, and, but I can promise you that it will be in a supplementary packet for you to take a look at on Monday afternoon, and you'll have until Thursday to take a look at those, and if you have any questions, give us a call. I also would remind you that this Saturday, we have a special workshop, a committee meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee at 9:00 in the morning to discuss the new proposed Unified Development Ordinance, otherwise known as the zoning code. We'll have light refreshments. I would recommend, if you want to imbibe with those donuts and pastries that you get here around 8:30, and we'll start the meeting at 9:00 o'clock sharp on Saturday morning. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Any questions? If not, that brings us to the consent agenda, and there's nothing on the consent agenda. That brings us to Planning, Zoning, and Building. Alderman Cadala?
No report.
Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary. Alderman Shockey?
Mr. Mayor, no reports.
Public Works? Alderman Wesley?
Two reports. I remember one revocation of a local 150 contract. I am going to obtain a motion to table that till next council meeting, due to the fact of the light of the financing situation right now.
Motion to table, I believe it's 4-1, 2010?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is item number two, brush collecting and pickup contracts. This is for the contract that we have now with Winkler's Tree Service Company for picking up our citywide brush pickup. Some aldermen asked for this to be put on agenda. I will open it up for discussion, I guess, since a lot of people ask for this put on agenda, so I want to care, address this at this time.
Before we go into open discussion of it, is there a motion to give notice to cancel, or is there a motion to proceed with the contract? Alderman Shockey?
I'll make a motion to cancel that contract. I think we have to let them know 90 days beforehand.
I believe that's correct. Let me see if there's a second.
Second.
On the question, Mr. Bond?
Yes.
The answer is yes. Any discussion? Alderman Lewitin?
John Kramer, I read your report, and the thing that I looked at and stuck out is the fact that you've reduced staff, and you have pointed out that with the reduced staff, you don't have the time. Also, that the remaining staff has been rededicated to other areas of concern. That basically means work. And that you think that it can't be done unless you hired two people. So with this dilemma, is this an oxymoron that you can make come together?
I don't know if that's a question answered in a simple word or not. As I stated in my memo, we have had a reduction in staff over the years. Going back as far as 2005, I can find street department records indicating close to 10 employees. Currently, staffing-wise, we're at seven employees, six being maintenance workers, one being an acting street supervisor. So there has been a decrease in staff since the last time that brush collection was done. I started after the brush collection actually began in Wooddale, so I was not present when brush collection was part of Public Works' normal day-to-day operations. So some changes were made prior to me being here. I have increased responsibilities to the street department since I've been here two years. So there is an increase in the amount of workload, there's an increase that's documented in the amount of service requests that are coming in, there's an increase in overall utilization of staff across the entire department, not just in the street department. And I think I tried to outline that as in-depth as I could in the memo. Looking at just a straight numbers game, currently, Winkler's takes approximately three to four days to complete the entire town with two crews. And they do not work just eight hours. 10, 11, 12 hours, depending on how long it takes. They're in the business to get in, chip the brush in a short amount of time, and get on to the next area, whether that be another town, another job, et cetera. The city of Wooddale, we're bound by the collective bargaining unit, which says we have roughly seven and a half hours worth of working time during the day. So with one chipper, one truck, in order to do that same amount of work, it cannot possibly be done in that three-to-four hour, or three-to-four day timetable that Winkler's was once doing it in. If I go back to the original memo that my predecessor Gary Holm wrote in order to privatize brush collection, he stated that 17 hours roughly, 1,700 hours, excuse me, annually were spent doing brush collection. If we carry those same numbers, that's where I came up with that, anywhere between 10 to 14 days a month. The only other remedy I know of, besides adding bodies to get the same level of service, would be to either, A, drop the level of service, not pick up as many times per month as we currently do, excuse me, many times per year as we do now, or we eliminate the contract, or we add two bodies to equate the same level of service, which what the residents expect now, with the same level of service across the board that the street department provides currently, in all the other roles and all the other duties.
I consider that a very, very good answer. I think that the opposition, or the people who want to drop the contract, believe that it will create a savings of $89,000, and you pointed out in your memo with very good argument that that's not true, that it's going to add perhaps as much as it takes off. However, you did say right now that you could do it by dropping the expectations of the citizens to only one or two pickups per year instead of once a month. So my belief is that the reason the city council would cancel the contract, and the only reason, is to save money. It's not to bring the work back in. So your argument boils down to that if you want to save money, the only way you can do it is having, is by having extremely limited brush pickup. And I would say that then it's our responsibility to decide whether or not the citizens, the citizens of the city can accept a lower level of brush pickup, commensurate with the savings of money to the city to keep black balance. I give that out to everybody, not as an answer, but as a question. And I would, I'd like to hear from Roy Wesley.
Actually, Alderman Lewitin, we have a new piece of information for you, which may impact your decision. Mr. Douthat?
Actually, it's not new information. It's information, and it's information that's been included in the last waste contract that we signed five years ago, and language that is contained in the waste contract that's before you tonight for an extension, and that's to have the waste hauler pick up brush. The parameters are as follows. As long as the residents send out their brush in lengths not to exceed four feet, with no more than two-inch diameter, twigs, sticks, branches, whatever, and as long as they're bundled, the waste hauler will pick them up along with the normal yard waste, leaves, grass, what have you, on a weekly basis. Now, does that take a little more effort on the part of the citizens? I think it probably does, because they're going to have to make sure that their twigs or branches are no more than four feet in length, and are no more than two inches diameter, and they're going to have to wrap a string around them. But they can do that, they can haul it out to the curb once a week, and the waste hauler will pick that up as part of the normal yard waste pickup. That's been in the contract for years. I don't know when, certainly before my time, we got away from having the waste hauler pick up that responsibility and either do it in-house or farm it out, but our third option is to follow the contract and, and turn the responsibility back over to the waste hauler as part of the normal fee that they charge us.
Thank you. I assume I'm taking the floor back, because you've answered my question, and that could be the answer. They said that they can, I'm sorry, they, John said that they can pick up limited work with the manpower that they could squeeze out of the workforce, and they could, now, now what you've said makes, makes everything come together. If we cancel the contract, we have everybody take their, their brush, make it into two-inch diameters, four feet long, bundle it, and get rid of it daily, so the only thing that's left is larger boughs and, and bran, and, not branches, stumps. And therefore, can you handle it? That's the question.
Graham?
Currently, stumps are not in Winkler's contract either, so we would not look to pick those up as the current contract. I have the current contract in front of me. It basically states that Winkler's will pick up anything between two inches and eight inches in diameter. So we would basically, that level of service currently isn't provided, so that would be an additional level of service that we would currently pick up if that's what the city council wanted to include. But again, right now, the contract for Winkler's is two-inch for eight, two-inch to eight-inch diameter branches, and the piles must be 10-foot wide, four-foot high, eight-foot long. So basically, the only difference currently between the brush contract and the allied contract would be the length of the branches must be shorter than, or four feet.
Alderman Shockey?
Just less than two years ago, before we had this contract for brush pickup, our people picked up one ward each week. The first week, they picked up Ward One, second week, we picked up Ward Two. At that time, I understand it would take a day or less for each ward, that's what we were told. We were told at the time that it was a wash between having our people do it and paying almost $100,000 to have it done outside. I don't know about everybody else in this council, but having our people do it and having to pay an extra $100,000 isn't a wash, it's an extra $100,000. Now, we just heard what the mayor said about the money, and we may not be getting, according to some of the politicians in Springfield, we may not be getting that money this coming year. As a matter of fact, it was talked about amateurization, if I remember, that in four years, they may take over a period of five years to pay us this year's money at quantities of maybe $25,000 per month. But that's not until at least four years before they'd start to pay that money back to us that we should be getting monthly now. I think we're all going to have to tighten our belt now. We did pay over $43,000, if I'm not mistaken, for a new chipper. We didn't have a new chipper two years ago, we were still using the old one. We were told it was not really safe to use, because it was so old, so we did agree to buy a new chipper. People are still confused about when they should put out brush. Some of them still put it out the first Monday of their ward number of the month. I'd like to see us go back to what we were doing before and save that additional money, because I'm not sure where it's going to come from, to be honest with you. From what we heard in Springfield, we're going to have to be cutting back on an awful lot of things, and this seems like a very obvious one, to go back just two years and do what we were doing before. And nobody at that time seemed to have any problems with it. Thank you.
I'll recognize Alderman Cadala, but I just want to amplify on what Alderman Shockey just said about this re-amortization, what the state is talking about doing with the distributive fund. One of the proposals is, let's assume they don't make payments to us for eight months, eight months times 80,000, $680,000. Rather than issuing us a check when they do their refinancing, they would re-amortize that $680,000 over the next five years. So in effect, every municipality becomes a banker for the state of Illinois and its debt. They would not issue us a check for $680,000, they would issue us payments over five years for the $680,000. That's one of the proposals they're talking about. Alderman Cadala?
Yeah, the council members who were in Springfield have the latest and not necessarily greatest information regarding the future of our budget, and it appears to be grim, so I, I, on many levels, agree with Alderman Shockey and respect what he's saying. I just want to remind everybody, we need to be practical about this. This is still a service that, on some level, we have to provide. Some neighborhoods need this service at a higher frequency than, than others do. I thought it worked great before when city staff managed this on their own, and other than having to remember to put your brush out at a different week, I didn't see much of a difference in, in level of service and performance. You know, John, John Kramer did an admirable job of, of laying out the facts, and there are less employees in that department than there were before. So, and, and, so I think there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. All I can do is, you know, take the input that, that staff gives us, take the input that, that we know we've got to deal with, with the budget, and try to come up with the, you know, some kind of an answer here. I'm worried about canceling this contract, because if we went down to, you know, there's a proposal on the table of, you know, once, once a year, there's going to be a lot of brush on a lot of streets, because the residents aren't going to keep it in their backyard, they're not going to want to double and triple handle this stuff. And then as far as giving as much to, to our regular waste pickup allied, I don't know about anybody else in this room, but I can't change diameter of my branches that fall. If it's bigger than two inches, I can't make it two inches. So we have to, you know, we have to be practical about how we're going to deal with that. For anybody that lives in an area with mature trees, it's, it's a way of life that, once a month, you've, you very likely have something bigger than two inches to deal with. And now, you know, my understanding with, with allied is, they want us to bundle what we didn't used to have to bundle. I mean, I've always put my smaller-than-two-inch and shorter-than-four-foot garbage stock in, in garbage cans, and it's been, and it's been hauled away without issue. So if, if that's another contention point in, in tonight's future discussion on the, on the allied contract, I, I got a big problem. You know, I understand we got to save money, but we, you know, and I agree, and I think we have to change the level of service, I agree with that, too, but we got to be practical, and we've got to understand the details about how this is going to work and the negative repercussions, and, you know, we can tighten our belts, and I think we will, I know we will, and we have to ask our residents to deal with some concessions, and I know they will, but I think we have to find that balance. And I'm not convinced that making the decision tonight to get rid of this And I'm not convinced that making the decision tonight to get rid of this contract is, is the, is the best way to find that balance. That might be the ultimate solution, but I don't have the other answers I need tonight to, to prove to me that that's the right way to go.
Alderman, please.
Going back to what Alderman Shockey said about, when we were told, first told about Winkler's, that it's a wash, money-wise, but the thing that they sold us on, I remember this, well, we'll be able to do the tree trimming in the parkways, we'll be able to shoot the sewers, you know, with the cameras to see if we have any infiltration, any blockages, all that kind of stuff. But one of the, one of the things we did do was leave this contract open if we did not like the service, that we could get rid of it. The bottom line was, I think last year I made a comment, you know, I really didn't like what they were doing, I didn't see anything impressive, on bottom line what they were doing as far as the picking up of the brush, because I had a few people call me and whatnot. But the other thing is, when we were getting the chipper, that was one of the reasons I voted for the chipper. I thought we were going to get rid of this contract and go back to doing it in-house. Now, I understand with the two extra employees, I get all that, there might be a little less tree trimming going on or something if we do this, I understand, but I think $98,000, actually, it's going to be less, because we have to give them 90-day notice, so we're going to have to pay them for the first three months of the contract, but I'm in favor of getting rid of Winkler's.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I'm, I'm almost somewhat disturbed. It seems like we're doing double service, that it's in the waste hauling contract, and then also we outsource it and performed it in-house as well prior to that. So I, I would say let the waste hauler do the hauling of the brush and save the $99,291 this year. That's $100,000 off our deficit of $1 million. And for the one-off situations, that perhaps there's a drop area where citizens, if they have an extra-large branch, they can drop it at that location or call Public Works for those one-off situations, but I, I think we're going to find that they'll work just fine. Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Wesley?
John, we already heard what the price of the chipper was. How much was the box for the, the truck? Did we get a new box?
The upgrade of vehicle 227. 227 was the original chipper truck. We did not replace the box, we repainted it, so we-